condolences to Kimberly's family. At this most difficult time, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. The First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duty. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public business rather than the private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular agenda items?
Yes, we have three. Four, I'm sorry, four.
Okay. So first I have in person Andrew Montlegre. Mispronounced your name. You'll have three minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon and thank you for having us. I am the co-founder of a nonprofit called Manos Que Sobreviven, which has for the last five years been distributing food three blocks away from the Vandy Camp Innovation Center. We are grassroots nonprofit incorporated in 2018, staffed entirely by volunteers. I think it's an extraordinary group. From the diverse backgrounds that are all held together by a common condition of food insecurity. Everyone lives in the Vandy Camp community. Last week was our first food distribution there and we had to stop at 100. Today, when I was, we don't have a food distribution today and that's before you on the agenda. But when I went there at 8:00 AM to tell people that there's going to be no food, there were already 56 people waiting. Discussions with LACCD staff began in August of 2023. We serve food in partnership with the LA Regional Food Bank. About 7,000 pounds a week delivered in pallets and that serves in 2024 11,682 households and 38,841 individuals, all based in Northeast LA. We also issue Metro Tap cards and we host medical screenings from Queens Care Health. We attract other social services on the sidewalks at our former site at Irving Middle School. We have the support of every elected official representing the area and Vandy Camps is three blocks from our current site, perfect for continuity in the community. In the late 1990s, Northeast LA organizations worked hard to preserve the building's demolition and succeeded in preserving it for community resource. It became a designated monument. MQS depends on local grants which go to basic supplies and services, sorting bins, tables, canopies, various stuff. There is little room for rent and all our discussions prior to this with LACCD included a token rent payment of $1. We were not told about getting charged market rates until last December. We asked that the board consider our relocation and a token rent. We have no alternative sites for keeping the food distribution going. There will be, there's one mom parent here to talk about it and there's another one that will be doing it via Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Lenny Lara. Lene? Okay. The other person is Monica Campos. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of what MQS does. I'm what they call one of the success clients. I came to MQS as a client, desperate for food. I have two boys that are special needs. My husband was in car and I was lost. Not only did they help me with food, they helped me with resources. They helped me with being able to get my kids to appointments, treatments, therapy, everything else. And they became my family. And it gets to the point where not only was I a success for them, I became part of them and now we help and I'm part of MQS. So all the things that we do for everybody, as you see all these people that we're feeding, I was one of them. I was one of them that was asking for food, one of them that was asking for, hey, I need, you know, I need a little bit of help. And they stayed by my back and I'm me in return have become part of MQS. And we just want to continue doing that for the community so that I see other moms out there that need help. I see all these families that we feed. It's hard to say that I was one of them and I want them to be able to get the help that I got as well. So we want those services to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lenny Lara and I'm also part of MQS. I'm a mom of two boys and my husband had a massive stroke, so my family was left in disrepair. I would wait hours for food and I was one of the people waiting in line and I was near the front of the line and someone asked me, hey, we're low on hands, would you like to come out and help? So I jumped out of the car and helped them and I've never left. To say that my family had a hard time is, it's hard for me to say, but MQS really helped me and my family and my boys and as well as others. My, my boys are now no longer hungry. They're striving and doing very well in school and because they gave so much, I'm trying to give back in return and use my skills and knowledge to help them and, and help organize the volunteers and help organize the weekly distributions and, and I'm the one who was starting the data crunching, seeing the numbers rise and all the people that we help. And we've come to know the community. We've, they've come to depend on us for food and resources. And we just ask that we be given the chance to continue to do this for our community. And I implore you to consider hosting us and not charging more than the token rent. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Up next we have George Pla.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Pla. I'm the founder and CEO of Cordoba Corporation. I'm a proud graduate of East LA College and I've said too many times, without my A degree, I'm not going anywhere. I'm a product of this district. In my 42 years in business, I have never ever spoken before a policy body on a procurement, but this bond program is too important to the taxpayers and to you. The districts are a few process qualified, both Cordoba and Jacob is qualified to manage the program. However, when the staff's intent to award was published, the report did not include an evaluation of each firm and did not include scores. So the question is asked, why didn't you protest? Well, it's quite simple. You can protest when you have no information on evaluation or scoring. Seriously, the staff recommendation was issued on June 6, 5:00 PM and the protest period expired June 6, 5:00 PM. Now, there's not one person in this room that wants another delay. We've been through this three times already. You can imagine the expanse that everyone has gone through for this. But this decision is too important for you and for the taxpayers. I am simply asking you to defer the item only until you have better information on evaluation and scoring on both firms so that you can make an informed decision. I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C disclosures. Chancellor, can you please lead us in Agenda Item D1? One.
Thank you, Board President Ino. Prior to proceeding to vote on matters before the board on the agenda, trustees are requested to advise staff if there are any items on the agenda for which they receive a contribution from a participant in the matter, which requires disclosure and recusal under the Levine Act and another conflict event. Trustees, when your name is called, please advise if you have disclosures to make on any of the items on the agenda. So identify the item number for such item. Please also state the basis of the conflict by either identifying the donor of a disqualifying campaign donation or providing information about another qualifying financial. I'll take roll call now. Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
None.
Trustee Vela?
No.
Trustee Veras?
None.
Item D, approval of the Agenda and Order of Business Minutes. The Land Acknowledgement Act acknowledgement approval, I think is really important now more than ever. So I will read it. The Los Angeles Community College District holds lands that originally and are still inhabited by the Gabaleno, Angva, Gabaleño, Band of Mission Indians, Kits Nation, and the San Manuel, San Fernando, and San Fernandano Tatavium Band of Mission Indians. We honor and respect their elders and descendants as we continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. Before we proceed, Chancellor Roman, are there any changes to the Agenda and Order of Business?
Board President Ino, we have none. Thank you.
May I have a motion in a second to approve the Agenda and the Order of Business?
Don't move.
So moves by Vela, second by Bueno. Roll call please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
May I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes for the Special Board Meeting in closed session of May 2nd, 2025 and the regular board meeting in closed session of May 7th, 2025? The move by Hernandez? Second, Ino? Roll call please, oh, any discussion?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Do any of the members of the resource table wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before the board?
All right, for the record, my name is Bruce Hicks. I'm the LACCD 721 Chapter President, also SEIU 721 E-Board, representing over 100,000 Californians. So distinguished members of the board, trustee chancellor, we welcome you. Student trustee, give you a hand right here, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. SEIU 721 local members, colleagues from our partner, unions, faculty, staff, and advocates for educational social. Want to talk about some of the events and what we can do and what we have been doing as labor union. Also want to thank the chancellor and his department. Raids and arrests, all these things happen. He has the presence of mind to bring the workforce, the people in to talk about it very, showed a lot of empathy. Thank you, chancellor. Okay, so we got here today at a pivotal moment in our collective journey, moment that demands not only our attention but our unified action. As workers who form the backbone of the Los Angeles Community College District, we stand at the intersection of educational, equity, labor rights, and justice. Our work extends far beyond the boundaries of our job description. We are the guardians of opportunity for thousands students, many who represent very communities vulnerable, equity. So the contemporary political economic climate, unprecedented of executive worker within California state that historically been known as a progressive for its progressive values, we are witnessing a corrosion of labor protection and public investments in education's justice. The present circumstances shaped by the current administration signify a direct assault on people of color, especially within Los Angeles, California. California state is often viewed as very progressive, a bastion of progression. This situation that we're currently all experiencing, one of the reasons why we can't be at the district office because people are protesting and they have a First Amendment right to and they should be doing that, is because of what's happened in this administration. So this situation reflects a troubling trend where California, Los Angeles particularly is being leveraged as a launch path for right wing agendas that seek to undermine the rights and well-being of our marginalized communities. So these policies that are coming forth by this and the rhetoric is, that's coming from our current administration, federal administration, creating an environment of fear, fear in our colleges to where people are worried of getting snatched off the stage while they getting their degree unheard of, doesn't even wait. It's causing division, challenges in our community, and threaten the very fabric of the social justice that we in Los Angeles, California have long championed. So from a, my perspective as a 721, a labor leader, we must consistently strive to maintain our unity, standing together in solidarity as we rise peacefully resist the challenges that are facing all of us. It's essential that we channel our collective strength and determination into nonviolent actions that advocate justice and equality. So SEIU 721 is not going at this alone. We're not alone in this. Our strength multiplies when we stand shoulder to shoulder with our brothers for the FT 1521 Staff Guild, FT 51 Faculty Guild, excuse me, 21 Faculty Guild, the Teamsters 911, Buildings and Trades Council, and SEIU Local 99. So what's the path forward? Even though these challenges are facing us, they're not insurmountable. History has taught us, you can go back to the Civil Rights Movement, labor was the motivating portion that organizing people and helping them do boycotts. So history has taught us that organized workers, when they unite in purpose, committed to peaceful but persistent action and achieve remarkable transformation. So as we're here today, we're going to talk about the business of the district and everything we need to talk about to maintain the business operations of the district. Let us carry a understanding of a renewed commitment. We all have, I'm representing 721, we have our interests, all the labor units have members, we represent our interests, but we can still stand together across lines, speak with one voice for dignity and justity, act collectively to protect and advance social justice rights, and build coalitions necessary for the last in time. So more than anything, we need to maintain solidarity on the point of social justice that's attacking us. That's our motivating goal. We're all here for the students. We all here for the students. So thank you for that. I really wanted to just address that concern. So as I go forward, very excited about the SEIU 721 professional development. So this is contractual language. We've took this to help our members. We've noticed a long time ago that classified employees don't get a lot of professional development. So this is one of the things that, you know, would work from the district that we have decided that can help our leaders, 721 leaders. So I'd like to express my gratitude to Vice Chancellor Williams and her team for their invaluable contributions to the success of our event. In particular, I like to highlight the efforts of Director of HR Lisa Bigger, I think she's here in the House, they can really appreciate the work he's done with. Thank you. And I can go on a day. Claudia Abad from the Office of Employee Relations and a special acknowledging to somebody who I just think is a secret sauce in this district, Gigi Jamizo. Haven't worked with her? She is exceptional, committed to her job. She went beyond her prescribed duties. Let's just think about that, you know, not what's in the job, but beyond her prescribed duties to help our members, to ensure that our members can take full advantage of the essential professional development training that's taking place July 27. And then I also want to thank Director of Business Services, Ms. Moffett and her team, Jason and her team. Hey, when we call the action, I am just overwhelmed by how the members of this district who work hard in different positions and we generally just hear about negatives, what's not going on. I want to bring light to people helping other employees, members in this district for good. You know, not that people not doing it for good, but I want to highlight the fact that this is happening. So if I call or send an email, everybody is just coming to help. So I'm appreciative of that. Our members are appreciative of that. I want to share that. And then lastly, I want to just talk about our event. It's Friday, June 27. It's at 8:00 AM to 4:00. It's in Pinstripe. Just to all our members at home, in attendance, in the corporate team building event venue, we've been sending out emails to sign up and the address is there, we're going to send some more out. So LACCD Board Trustee David Vela will deliver the keynote address where he is going to engage in an in-depth discussion on the critical issues of a very bad word now, diversity, equity, and inclusion. That word we not supposed to say, I guess, but we know it exists. So thank you for agreeing to that. And then Veronica Gunn, the first woman of color to serve as the International President of AFSCME, can't really say that, will address the grievance and right and defense. She's one of the, she is one of, she is the first woman of color to represent ASME as an international vice president. And then the Office of Employee Relations is committed to offering our members training on comprehensive training that effectively help us navigate various workplace issues that we run into. And then lastly, Dr. Hall Baker is coming to be a presenter again and she will offer invaluable insight into professional development drawn on her extensive experience as a human relations professional. So for those of you who are at home and attendants, when you see those emails, take a break, get some information that can help you in your daily work. Sign up, hope to see you June 27. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the new student trustee as well. We look forward to working with you. June is LGBTQIA+ Month, National Caribbean American Heritage Month, Black Music Month, and let's not forget National Immigrant Heritage Month. June 8th was Race Unity Day and boy, have we seen some race unity in the streets of Los Angeles. One of our students from City College and an AFT intern, Jace Quenka, was there as a freelance journalist at one of the protests, taking photos when he was shot by the police with a rubber bullet. His finger was partially detached and his camera was destroyed. After four hours of surgery, they were able to reattach his finger. I marched with Jace last Saturday and last night I told him that AFT voted, AFT 1521 voted to support him in helping pay his doctor bills and get him a new camera. Additionally, tomorrow is Juneteenth commemorating the emancipation of enslaved people in Texas. No more are my people going to be forced to work in the fields, clean the master's home, or take care of his children, what some so-called leadership of this country called black jobs. These jobs have been turned over to primarily undocumented labor done mainly by Latinos. We have gone from slavery to the exploitation of this vulnerable population. Some might call this progress, but I call it shameful. Most of these workers don't even receive a minimum wage to perform some of the hardest and most dangerous work in the country. They deserve our respect and protection. Last but not least, last Thursday was Loving Day commemorating the anniversary of Supreme Court ruling Loving versus Virginia, which made international marriage legal. Clearly, June must be, excuse me, clearly, June must be Trump's least favorite month as we celebrate all these things that he hates. While he hates, we love. We love our country, our city, our people, our community, our students, and all deserve them. I saw the love in mostly peaceful demonstrations over the last few weeks culminating over 200,000 Angelinos marching in the No King's Day action to end authoritarianism and the ICE raids that have been used to terrorize our beloved community. I saw the love in the immediate aftermath of the first wave of ICE raids at the Hente graduation. I saw the love at the rally to free David Huerta, the beloved labor leader of our sibling union SEIU. I'm glad to see David is home, but he still has a trial to face. I saw the love at our graduations last week as we celebrated our students' success, including citizens, dreamers, immigrants, and undocumented individuals alike. We celebrated them all in Spanish and English to show respect to the madres, padres, abuelos, and abuelitas in the audience. I saw the love in this board as well as in the chancellors and administrations communicate with quick reactions and responses to support our students and communities. The chancellor's constant communications have given direction and comfort at these uncertain times. I also felt the love from our members and faculty as they receive, as I received dozens of supportive messages from faculty in response to emails I sent out in support of our immigrant students. Education creates not just economic opportunity, but it also informs and transforms. We don't just train a workforce, we also teach a community. We teach them critical thinking, their history, and about their lives. This education makes them a better and more involved citizenry and not, that not only understands their rights, but also the rights of others and the power of nonviolence. It is said that you can't dismantle the master's house with the master's tools. Do we need any more reminders that the master's tools are division and violence? This is what we do. We help them build a better toolkit. We give them hope, we give hope to the hopeless, helping to alleviate some of that anger and frustration, allowing our students to imagine a better world. Thanks to all the faculty, staff, and administrators who made last week's graduation possible and helped our students and communities move to a brighter future. Together, we can be the beacon of hope during these dark times. Never let them take our joy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Dash Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of AFT 1521A, filling in for our union president Andrea Edwards, who's unavailable today. Earlier this year, she was elected president, or excuse me, was elected vice president on the Executive Council of CFT, a union of educators and classified professionals. Over the past year, we have recruited over 120 new union members thanks to our organizing efforts. Organizing means building a critical mass of members prepared to take collective action to win a better contract, demand respect from management, and resist the attacks from the White House and on our most vulnerable communities. In that spirit, we've been mobilizing our members to peacefully protest ICE raids and attacks on our democracy and our communities. Together, we can make our district a better place to learn for our students and work for our members and support the communities that our classified members serve every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, for the, oh, good afternoon, President Ino, members of the board, and chancellor. For the record, I am Dr. Deborah Harrington, President of the Teamsters. We are now the Teamsters 986. We merged together. I've been told by many of my Asian friends that 986 are much better numbers than 91. And I'm representing our district teams. To begin, on behalf of our members, I'd like to extend a welcome and congratulations to our new student trustee Jasmine Monet Francis. I look forward to the new trustee's tenure in the coming year and supporting our student leaders in any way the Teamsters can. More than anything else, I do want to thank Dr. Roman for convening all the labor leaders in LACC D, as well as academic senate leadership. First thing, after the events of, I guess it's a couple of weeks now. During this meeting, we agreed that the activities being conducted on behalf of the current Federal Executive Administration are designed to promote fear, so chaos and division, and likely undermine the constitutional rights foundational to American democracy. While we know many of our students, faculty, and staff feel under attack personally or have friends and family who are experiencing deep fear and anxiety, I am grateful our chancellor assured us of his and the board's steadfast commitment to protecting the dignity, safety, and human rights of all of our students. It is altogether fitting, at this time, that we celebrate via the board resolutions today, both Juneteenth and Pride. Both resolutions demonstrate LACC D's commitment to human dignity and human rights, just as the labor partners across LACC D stand with the chancellor and the board in doing everything we can to support our students, faculty, and staff, and to stand against the attempts to undermine the safety and security of Angelenos and the targeting of the most vulnerable amongst us. In honor of both Juneteenth and Pride, I'd like to conclude by quoting the original angelic troublemaker and groundbreaking LGBTQ+ and civil rights leader Bayard Rustin. When an individual is protesting society's refusal to acknowledge his dignity as a human being, his very act of protest confers dignity on him. In this spirit, my message to my fellow deans is to take care of themselves at this time, as that self-care will be paramount, as we do not know how long all of this is going to go on. And their leadership is vital to our LACC D community. And I want to encourage all of us, if we so choose, to exercise our First Amendment rights and engage in peaceful protest with great love for Los Angeles and its beloved diverse and deserving communities. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Krista Ozen, representing SEIU Local 99. I would like to congratulate our new student trustee. We look forward to working with you. And I would also like to say that it's troublesome to see the injustices being done to our immigrant, immigrants here in Los Angeles. SEIU, I mean, Local 99, I'm sorry. I have marks all over the place in my paper. Okay, Los Angeles is a city that's built on immigration for those seeking a new opportunity to a better way of life. SEIU Local 99 stand in solidarity and support our immigrant brothers and sisters. And I also would like to thank Dr. Roman for bringing all the labor groups together to discuss the impact this may have on the colleges and ways to protect our immigrant students. We want to make sure that our immigrant students feel safe coming to school and taking classes without having to fear or worry, you know, about whether or not ICE might show up on campus. And I want to also thank the labor groups and the community for supporting David Herrera, President of SEIU United Service Worker. I want to thank everyone for all of your support. Also, I want to thank President Trustee Ino, Vice President Hoffman, Vice President Hernandez, Trustee Vela, and former trustee Fong for participating in SEIU Local 99 recognition luncheon on June 7. Thank you for all your support. We really appreciate you being there. We had a lot of fun, and we just want to thank you for showing up. And also, I would like to say that so far, only seven names have been submitted to the Personnel Commission Office for outstanding work performance. I believe I brought that up to you at the last board meeting, that, you know, I would like to see more people recognized in a district. And, you know, seven people, I mean, I think we could do a little better than that. Therefore, you know, I ask that all the presidents reach out to their leadership team about recognizing their staff for outstanding work performance. And as we celebrate Juneteenth, I want to emphasize that it's connected to modern social justice movement, serving as both a celebration of freedom and a call to action for all racial equality. Although it marks the end of slavery in the United States, it also highlights the ongoing fight against systematic racism, police brutality, economic disparity. During the recent years, Juneteenth has gained renewed attention, particularly following the death of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd. These tragedies gained nationwide protests reinforcing the importance of Juneteenth as a month to reflect on the unfinished work of racial justice. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, we have Jeff Hernandez on line for them to sit in.
Greetings. I, I want to thank all of you for your support for our students, our employees, our communities, trustees, chancellor, and it's a congratulations to our newest trustee, student trustee. I'd be there in person if it wasn't for a bit of a flare up on my lower back, but all's good. All's good. I wanted to start first by extending our appreciation for two outgoing academic senate presidents, college-level academic senate presidents, Van Chaney at Lee Harbor College and Mary Ann Galindo at Lee Mission College. I also want to welcome two new college academic senate presidents. At Lee Harbor, Alberto Pimentel, and at Lee Mission College, Ashley Sparks Jamal. Alberto and Ashley will hopefully become familiar faces to you all as they lead their academic senates and their advisory capacities to the board. Also, I want to echo the appreciation to Chancellor Roman for the impromptu meeting to update us in our district, on the district's response regarding the ICE raids and the protests, and alert us of possibilities, including the possibility that the board meeting may have to be postponed. And indeed, that did, that did happen. And it was really, I would say, reassuring, the listening mode that we received from the chancellor. It was somewhat reminiscent to me of his leadership at the local level during the COVID years. It, it, it's, I think, very reassuring for all of us to know that, you know, with the board's leadership, the direction from the chancellor, it's one where it's, uh, it involves shared governance, it involves participatory governance, and as well pulling the district family together during times of crisis. And we certainly are seeing that for our students and employees who are directly threatened by the ICE enforcement actions that are taking place, certainly extra-legal actions that are taking place, and that we certainly don't want any part to be interfering with our ability to carry our mission to our students. Many of us were fearing that that indeed is what was going to happen, you know, as graduations were about to start. And I think in some cases, there may have been a negative impact on attendance for some events. I'm happy to report that the graduation that I attended as a faculty member at Eastlake College, we had one of the best turnouts we've had in years. And interestingly, we didn't have a problem that we ordinarily have, where, where there's so many students, almost like a thousand students or so, and of course, all the family members in the stadium, that as soon as folks get their recognition on stage, then they're already thinking of leaving to go have dinner with the family. And that's not, that's not, that's really not, not, not too cool, obviously, for all the other students who are still in line to get recognized. We didn't have that problem this year. We did not have that problem this year, and I think it's because everybody in the stadium really felt it was so important to be present for the graduation. It was amazing to think that what we do, graduation, could be such a radical act in these times. It's a, it's a sorry state of affairs, right? So it's great that we're rising to the occasion, we're there, and I think it's also great that our voices are loud. Also, the faculty and the rest of the district family know that we can report out to others what we see the government doing. We have not lost our First Amendment rights. That was a point reiterated by the District Academic Senate in its meeting of May 8th, which I believe was after the last board meeting. I should also note that we do have ongoing concerns from now over a year when we adopted a resolution expressing concerns, really, strong concerns about, about the, um, the use of ELR investigations against folks in really a heavy-handed manner that has not been characteristic of this district in the many years that the folks have been in this district. We have not seen so many threats of dismissal if you don't cooperate, you know, with some kind of investigation, even as a witness. Targeting, it would seem, folks, including our district academic senate president and now leaders of the academic senate statewide. It's, 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 it's time. It's time to get that problem fixed. And we, and we are hopeful that the problem will get addressed. But, but, yeah, this is, it's starting to become very well-known, even outside our district, that things are out of control. So hopefully, hopefully, there'll be good news on that in the months to come. And I, I, I believe that that's, that's it for now. I just want to say that thank you again for, for, for your leadership, for really supporting us during, during this time. It's, it's just so important. And also for recognition, of course, of Pride Month. Many of us, it's, that's very, very special, you know, to our families. So thank you, and, and of course, Juneteenth. And now we, now we got to get, make sure we have resolutions for Immigrant History Month in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I need to go back a little bit into the agenda. I, I think first and foremost, sorry, Student Trust Francis, I didn't, I thought you were a part of the agenda to be sworn in, but I guess that already happened. So I did want to acknowledge you and welcome you to our board. We're really excited to have you, and so thank you so much for being here. I don't know if I can say something really quick, not to put you on the spot, but...
Testing, testing. First and foremost, I'm honored to stand here with you all today as your newly sworn-in student trustee. I was born and raised in the cities of Allentown in Philadelphia. I came from a single-parent household, four, including a twin brother. Like many students, my past hasn't always been easy. At one point, I left my family and I lived in a shelter for eight months. That experience changed me. It gave me perspectives. It gave me purpose, and it taught me the importance of community support and preservation. I share this not for sympathy, but because I know I'm not alone. There are so many students who face obstacles every day and still show up with strength and hope. As your student trustee, I'm here to be a voice of all of us and for those who are seen and for those who often feel invisible. Thank you for trusting me with this role. I'm ready to listen, to serve, and to help to make sure every student feels heard and represented. Thank you, guys.
I know, due to the move of the schedule, we will do more, something more formal for you next month.
Yes, July 2nd will be pretty much the actual formal graduation. I wasn't supposed to be here this week, but my flight ended up getting canceled. I'm definitely appreciative, Board of Trustees, being here for my recognition. And I'm also grateful for you guys showing up, showing my recognition as well. So thank you as well. But July 2nd, if you guys will, welcome, come back out. We might be at the district down on Wilshire, we're hoping. So I'm hoping to see you guys again for a natural celebration again. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to everyone here today, thank you for accommodating our last-minute change. I think the chancellor and the board, we just wanted to ensure everyone's safety. We didn't want to compromise that for the unknown. So we had a lot of variables, but it worked out. So thank you again for being here today. Have to also go back to items. I'm going to reopen the motion because we are going to remove the item, double I, 1. Can I get a motion? I have to get a motion to reopen. Can I get a motion to reopen the item? The move by Veras? Second by Ino? Student Trust defenses also, you can second. In the book. Okay, so need a roll call, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Good.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
So with that said, I ask Chancellor Roman, are there any changes to the agenda in order of business?
On further. Go back. Okay, so let's go ahead and, yes, we do have one. It's removal of II-1. This is the Human Resources item.
Great. Um, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda of the move by Hernandez? And second, Ino? Any discussion? Roll call, please, Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Buena? Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Good.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, board. Sorry. So now we're going to go to item F, the reports from the board. Trustee Henderson, can you please summarize the proceedings for the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee that you chaired on May 21st?
This is a relatively long one, so please bear with me. The Legislative and Public Affairs Committee met on Wednesday at the EAF. We had public comment from our district academic senate vice president and president regarding SB 241 and AB 1400, and their concerns regarding AB 1705 and 705. And we do look forward to hearing their recommendations and solutions on those items moving forward. We received federal updates from Joe O'Brien and Lauren Maddox of Holland and Knight. They talked about the proposed decrease in federal spending and the reauthorization of the 2017 tax cuts and the JOBS Act, as well as changes to work requirements for Medicaid and SNAP eligibility and the plans to establish a workforce Pell Grant. And also regarding the College Promise Program, talked about the impact to the program if the unit requirement for course load is increased from 12 to 15. Mark McDonald from MGI Advocacy provided an update on the May revise, which included a COLA adjustment for categorical programs and funding for credit for prior learning. and funding for credit for prior learning. Um, we were advised that Assembly Member Fong is continuing to secure support for student support, uh, block grant funding and um AB three-two-three sponsored by Fong and AB three-three-five sponsored by Gibson are in Assembly Appropriations Suspense. Um, we received a state policy update from David Nevin of Capitol Advisors regarding AB ten thirty-five and AB six forty-eight. Um, Mark McDonald also provided the state policy update for Resolute on behalf of David Quintana regarding AB six-nine-five and AB six, AB eight-six-one, which are also in Assembly Appropriations Suspense and Assembly Transportation respectively. Veronica Perez of Mercury Public Affairs providing an update on, on the budgets for the city and county of LA specifically focused on shortfalls, um, LA Fire, wildfire recovery, and their continued advocacy efforts. Robert um Ortega of Santa Maria Group providing an update um regarding letters of support for East LA and Pierce College, um, and earmark requests. Naomi Rodriguez of Three Gens Consulting reported out on their community engagement efforts around AB ten ninety-six and mainly the summit and LA Trade Tech, um, the Grand Avenue Project. And our Government Relations um Rep Maria Veloz highlighted the quarterly meeting with Government Relations Professionals of LA County um, Community College Districts that was held on April the twenty-eighth. Uh, Marcella Gomez of Build LACC um, the Communications Director introduced herself. Juliette Hidalgo, our own um Communications Director, provided an overview of community engagement efforts, public relations analytics, and the media marketing and branding campaign. And the next Legislative and Public Affairs Committee meeting is scheduled for June twenty-fifth. And Madam President, so ends my report.
Beautiful, very active. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Chancellor?
I, I wanted to add to that. Uh, also, there was a story on KCal News, Channel Nine yesterday, about that exact same bill. So it's getting a lot of traction, uh, and uh, it's great news, again, sponsored bill by LACC D through Assembly Member Fong. That wasn't mentioned, but the more important thing is, it's out there, getting a lot of traction and popularity, given the current time that we're in, so I wanted to add that as well.
Wonderful. Um, thank you so much. Trustee Hoffman, um, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee that you chaired on May twenty-first?
Thank you. Uh, we had one recommendation item, which is before you today, trustees, and that is the tentative budget presented by Ms. Gordon. And that, that's where I'll remember, the tentative budget is done before the actual final budget assigned by the governor, and so in September, we'll bring forward a final budget and a budget hearing, but I'm gonna ask for you to please approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six tentative budget today. Um, we also had a couple of information items. Um, one was a budget update on the May revise. Again, that was before the final budget uh was signed. And Ms. Gordon noted that there were no substantial changes from the governor's January budget proposal listing approximately sixteen million dollars in additional funds, COLA. We had a uh presentation on the third quarter three-eleven report um, showing a projected ending balance of a hundred and forty-one point six million, which is equal to about fourteen point eight percent of projected expenditures. And we looked at uh some of the five-year uh projections, and the board asked um a lot of questions, and again, that was an information item only. And then we got an internal audit quarterly report um from Dr. Yerhu. My report.
Thank you. Um, trustee Veras, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Institutional Effectiveness and Success Committee that you also chaired on the twenty-first?
Thank you. Um, the committee uh had a presentation that's um been uh recommended by the Committee for Approval to the Full Board of the West Los Angeles Education Master Plan. Uh, in addition to that, um, we continued our program review um, um, analysis or, or, or conversation throughout the district and um, that day, we had a chance to review West Los Angeles's um, West Los Angeles College's um dental uh hygien- hygiene tech uh program. Um, both the associates and the bachelor's degree, and so um, obviously, a very um successful program and amongst um uh, the first and uh most successful bachelor programs throughout the state of California, so um, I did also wanna note that um uh, I chaired the Ad Hoc Committee on Athletics and um wanted to offer a few findings from a student uh survey, student athlete survey that was performed um this year, and it was something that had been discussed, and um, so you know that um uh eighty percent of the response, or twenty-two percent of our student athletes participated in uh in the survey. Uh, eighty percent of them were satisfied with their equipment and facilities, uh, less than five percent dissatisfied with coaching. Ninety percent satisfied with strength, conditioning, sports medicine, nutrition. Um, it um also indicated that our student athletes are not very aware of issues like uh name-image-likeness rights and NCAA and AIA transfer rules. Uh, and one of the, or two of the big challenges that each uh, that, that, that our cohorts found was um frequently missing classes due to competitions and um having challenges with um, with basic needs, and so uh, uh, food, housing, and security. Uh, although it's in times generally lower than the general student population, it was called out in the student survey. Uh, on the, on the great side, um, is seventy percent of them would recommend their particular program um, to uh others interested in participating in athletics, so that's a, a higher than most um space. Um, the survey also talks about um recommendations to consider improving class flexibility for athletes, expanding holistic services as nutrition and mental health, um, increasing education for NIL and transfer rules, um, and then fostering a stronger coordination between athletics and academics. Um, the uh desire was to um continue serving, it's the first um of our district's kind survey in student athletes as a group, and uh the desire would be to continue to do those kinds of things um for the future, so um, so that's the two committee reports. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Hernandez, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Facility Master Planning and Oversight Committee that you also chaired?
Um, had an overview on the RFP update, uh, where us, given current housing and affordability crisis in Los Angeles throughout the state, the district is looking to create housing that will assist students in meeting their academic goals, which is our mission, is to ensure our students meet their academic goals. And so that is really in part in trying to find a long-term sort of financial sustainability for a housing portfolio with appropriate student support for our particular demographic of students, and so that really means pursuing these parallel tracks to deliver a housing, it, one by buying beds, um, partnering with other educational institutions, buying buildings, uh, which was our RFP call for properties, and building housing um on our existing, on our existing property and around or near our campuses, and so that's something that's down the line, and so we got an update on our RFP call for properties, eighty-four properties were submitted by thirty-two owners, which is um, a great, huge number, a lot of interest in selling existing housing product to the district. Um, our consultants are currently reviewing those submissions, and we'll have more information and updates on uh, some of the district's recommendations on how to move forward on that, but really good turnout in that regard, and we are moving forward on exploring the development of housing on district-owned property. Uh, the recommendation from the consultant team and from our facilities group is to go forward with a site located here at LA City College uh, right on Vermont. There was a town hall scheduled on May twenty-second, and there'll be continued town halls and workshops that invite the community um, and various stakeholders around LA City into the fall so that we can get adequate information and um, data so that we can move forward on an RFP that really is responsive to the needs of our students, and so that was a really good update. We also had an update on the district-wide elevator assessment um, and what we can do to improve elevator access throughout our nine campuses, as well as um a process to establish a project scope and budget for our existing bond program.
Thank you. Thank you, Board colleagues, for all of your commitment committees. We're doing a lot of work, so thank you, um, and to the district. So next is item G, the resolutions. We do have two. Celebrating lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, pansexual, two-spirit, androgynous, and asexual plus. LGBTQQIP two SAA plus, Pride Month. May I have a motion and a second on the item?
So moved.
The move by trustee Vela?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Hoffman. Um, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a little bit. Um, sorry about all those letters, everyone, um, but as you can imagine, um, you know, I just wanted to um really genuinely uh thank um a couple of people. Um, we had our lavender graduation, and I've gotta tell, yeah, it does deserve a round of applause and you know, um, I was very lucky, I think, to have uh presided over that graduation and then um, you know, giving power to ten thousand people in a stadium at East LA College while ice raids were happening down the street. And I have to tell you that we really want to thank our current chancellor who decided to move forward with our graduations amongst some of these rhetoric and, you know, fear mongering that's coming in from this shameful, uh, you know, time in society that we're in. So I really want to thank you, Chancellor, for doing that. I want to thank Monte Perez uh, and his uh, you know, wonderful staff at ELAC. Monte, thank you so much. It was, by the way, ELAC was fantastic. Why am I talking about the ELAC graduation under the LGBT, um, you know, uh, reso here? Because our students, you know, our students were a sea of diversity, um, and I can tell you that uh, the lavender graduation, I said something, and I, I think some people uh remember what I said, I said, you know what? I am very lucky to be a, a brown Chicano man, like Gabriel likes to coin me. A big one, a big gay Chicano brown man. But what I especially loved about our graduation was that we represent all colors, all races, the LGBT community, we do not at all discriminate against any of the colors of society, of race, creed, even religion. And it was apparent in that graduation, Dean Harrington, I know you saw that, and thank you so much, and also Nat Guerrero, because it was fantastic. We had parents there. We could tell, they were not from Los Angeles, they were here from the Midwest, from the East Coast, supporting their children graduating in the lavender graduation. And really, truly, that is symbolic because outside of there, here on Vermont, many, many people were not only being harassed, we thought, we had our, our transgendered, uh, uh, one of our amazing leaders out there, Bambi Sartsevo, who you all know. And she spoke about her time having to be suppressed because she didn't have job opportunities and having to literally work here in the corners of Vermont and Melrose. And I can tell you that I'm very familiar with this corner in many ways as well. I wasn't lucky enough uh to come to LA City College, but I can tell you that some of my favorite gay bars when I was growing up were around here, and they're closing down. Crazy, like all, a lot of gay bars are closing down. The LGBT culture, and I said it at that graduation, people are trying to erase us, literally. But guess what? LA City College, lavender graduation, we didn't allow it to happen. We graduated more than a hundred and thirty of our students under the lavender, our largest graduation yet. And thank you so much to everyone, and in particular, yes, our faculty, our staff, our student leaders, because it was them who continued to make it happen, and with the support of my colleagues on this board. You know, sometimes the board might not agree on everything, but LGBT in particular, students and keeping them safe is something that I am very lucky that my colleagues have always supported that. And usually, you know, we look at each other when there's an Asian-American resolution, an LGBT, a Latino, a Jewish-American. You know, sometimes I'm like, I'm not gonna talk, because it's an LGBT one, it's, you know, it, I don't want to be the one that, that does the talking to the resolution, but I've, I've found that it was fitting to do that this time. And thank you all so much for all the leaders out there in the community that have always been allies as well. Thank you so much. Thank you for being part of the LACC D family. And, you know, I am proud to see that right now, at this time, at this juncture in space and time, we are united to protect our students. Thank you so much.
Please, trustee Bueno?
Oh, okay. All right, now I have a voice. I'm not going to repeat anything, uh, trustee Vela, um, that you said, and, and also wonderfully dressed, by the way.
Thank you.
All right. Um, i- is, in terms of, of recognizing LGBT plus, and I can't, I didn't remember all the all the names, all the letters, so I apologize, but in terms of the Supreme Court's ruling against uh trans students, and I, I believe it was Tennessee, um, so as there are more rulings occurring, I think these resolutions are more important. So along with everything you just said, it's, it's just important to recognize the negative um policy environment that we're in. Um, so the significance becomes even more important.
Uh, thank you so much.
Other board colleague?
I'll just add briefly, I, I was able to also attend the lavender graduation, and it was goosebumps the entire time. I think the vibe, the love, um, the visibility, and just the space was so incredible, and thank you, Dean Harrington, for um inviting us and just being able to celebrate such a beautiful moment um with the families and, you know, it families, extended families, campus community, I think it really means a lot for us to show that we proudly support our students. Um, and then also to trustee Vela, you know, you have also been a huge advocate um legislatively to ensure that we have the funding to create safe spaces for our students, and not only here, but statewide, and hopefully, that's also visibility for the entire country right now as we are in a lot of transitional scarcity and suffering, and so just thank you to the campus community for supporting us in, in this endeavor. Um, okay, any the next, uh, the, or, there's another resolution.
We need a roll call.
Sorry, may I have a motion? Oh, no, we already have a motion. That was discussion. Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? Trustee Bueno?
Yeah.
Trustee Henderson?
Yeah.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yeah.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. So our next resolution is honoring Juneteenth, Emancipation Day, June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. May I have a motion and a second on the item? So moved. I have motion by trustee Hernandez, second by trustee Hoffman. Um, may I ha- any discussion? Yes, please, trustee.
Um, the need and significance of this resolution, I think, goes without question. Um, after four hundred years of slavery, of servitude, of Jim Crow, um, and now we're, we're looking at these executive orders from the White House seeking further to um erase people of color, anyone or anything that represents diversity, that represents inclusion and access, um, our country still needs to do better, and um, this is a really tiny step towards acknowledgement of, of wrong, um, but celebrating what we hope to be able to look forward to in the future, so um, I thank my board colleagues.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board? No. Um, yes, I, I wholeheartedly a- agree. Um, Lupe, roll call please. Lupe, roll call, please.
Student trustee Francis's advisory vote? Trustee Bono?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have the report from the chancellor.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I'm battling a cold here, not, not a bad one. I can take it. Trustee Hoffman. Board president Ino, members of the board colleagues, thank you so much. Let me start by thanking L.A. City College for hosting us today. I know we mentioned that this was impromptu. However, it's good to be here and appreciate the hospitality. I want to give kudos to the entire staff. I know they're behind the scenes, setting everything up, and they don't often get recognition. So if you're a member of the LACC team, can you please stand up and be recognized? Let's give them a round of applause. I think they're, they're around. I see Angela there. The heart of Los Angeles City College. Thank you so much. I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge what's transpired in the last couple of weeks in Los Angeles. As already been stated, we are an institution of nine beautiful colleges that really pride ourselves in being the largest in the nation, one of the most diverse, if not the most diverse, serving students of all walks of life. And I think it's imperative for us to really remain fully committed to supporting all of our students, especially those that we believe at this point are vulnerable. I'm proud to know that our district stands firmly and unapologetically with our immigrant students and their families. Let me say that again. We are proud to stand firmly and unapologetically with our immigrant students and their families. And we want to reaffirm our commitment to equity, inclusion, and access for all, regardless of immigration status, background, or circumstance. This is who we are. This is what defines us. And now, more than ever, our community needs our voice. So I want to thank the board of trustees. I can assure you that they have not waver on their commitment, and they stand with me in solidarity with all of our communities that we proudly serve. So I also want to thank the board of trustees for continuing to support our students. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. All right, let me go on to a couple of matters. If we can go on to the next item here, the slide. I'm going to quickly give you an update on enrollment. Summer started this week, so I want to give you some preliminary numbers on summer. We had nine wonderful graduations. If you could go back one, Lupe? Thank you. We had nine wonderful graduations. I have a short video. It's a minute and a half, don't worry, but I think it's important to give you a visual of some of the descriptions that folks have already conveyed in terms of how beautiful these actual graduations were. A little bit on the affinity celebrations. Again, thank you, trustee Vella, for giving us a little bit of what happened at the lavender. And I also, again, want to acknowledge, of course, Pride Month, Juneteenth, and then the pull-up mental health concert. So we can go up to our next slide now. Quickly on enrollment, again, we kicked off the summer on Monday. The numbers are trending upward. You will see that enrollment's up by seventeen percent, head count, and nineteen percent enrollment. All of the gender groups are up from last year. One thing to note, though, is that the male and female percentages are up almost the same. In the past, we have seen, you know, the male increases drag a little more, but in this particular instance in summer, we're seeing similar trends on both ends. So that's good. Our, our male students are coming back at similar rates now. We can go on to the next slide. All of our ethnicities are up. The percentage for Pacific Islander is down a little, but the actual number is low in and of itself. So sixteen percent really just reflects about ten students. So that's a little misleading, but overall, you'll see we're gaining on all ethnicities across the board. And one thing I've said over the last two, three months is that our non-credit continues to go up in enrollment, and that's good for us. We're not only looking at the eighteen-year-old, the twenty-five-year-old, but we're looking at older or adult learners that are coming back to school, entering through adulthood and non-credit, ultimately getting into credit programs, and some that are actually transferring. So this is a great pipeline for our community to get more students to enter our community college system. You'll see non-credits up sixteen percent in head count, fifteen percent in enrollment compared to last year. So again, trending upward, good signs for us. The last thing I'll note is summer is about sixty-seven percent online. That conforms with prior intercessions. Both our winter and summer tend to be significantly higher online because of the short-term courses. But you'll see the efficiency on the online is about ninety-one percent fill rate. So that's really good. Our classes are filling for the summer. So again, we'll update you maybe at the next board meeting. We'll have more concrete numbers, but summer so far is looking good for LACC and for all colleges across the district. Let's go ahead and go on to the next slide. Oh, did you have a, go ahead.
One question. I, I think in, during the committees, we saw an email, not an email, our Juliet brought up the fact that we have a new tracking system to track our advertisement. Do we know if we did that during the summer?
Uh, I'll, she's nodding, so the answer is yes. Perhaps at the next committee meeting, we'll try to get some numbers and data analytics on that.
That, that was a new innovation, that I hadn't seen that level of tracking. So it would be interesting to see the effect on, on enrollment.
We'll try to get some. All right, going on to the next slide. Lupe? Thank you. So again, what a wonderful celebrations we had last week. We really witnessed remarkable commencement ceremonies across nine colleges. Couldn't just help feeling so overwhelmed with joy. Students were energized. They were passionate. They were proud. They were happy to celebrate with their families. And again, I want to thank our nine college presidents, their faculty, staff, our trustees. All made it to at least one graduation, so I want to thank them as well. I think they felt the energy across the board. It was a time for us, you know, dealing with a lot of civil unrest, but I think it also energized a lot of the students who want to be there and show really what our students can do in communities of color. So I think we felt that sentiment across the board. We felt the passion for, and support for our communities. And I think it was important, as trustee Vella stated, to keep those and to show that we are not going to waver on what we need to do to support our students irrespective of what's happening outside of our community. So trustees, we have a, if you go to the next slide, we have a very short video that I want to show you, and this is my disclaimer before you play it. Or go ahead and play it. We're still getting photos, so I want to make sure I got a photo of each and every one of you, but there's more photos coming, okay? So this video will probably be five minutes once we're done. So we'll start with what we have and what we were able to get together for you today. So here we go. All right. And, and certainly I'd be remiss if I also didn't acknowledge. If we can go to the next slide, very quickly, the affinity celebrations, graduations. Of course, we had the PETA Summit. Thank you to board president Ino for hosting us. That was a wonderful event. I couldn't make it, but I heard nothing but positive comments from that superstar. So we'll do it again next year. Our Black graduate celebration was amazing. Southwest College, Dr. Culpepper, thank you for hosting us again. Chair Washington, I think, was part of that, Dr. Regina Smith as well. And then we had our MiHente graduation at East L.A. College, so Dr. Perez, president Perez, thank you for hosting us. Angelita Roberto was the chair. We had an amazing vibe that day as well, again, celebrating culture, identity. And then lastly, we hosted our, I'm sorry, if we could go back, I missed one. So we had lavender, and I think trustee Vella did an amazing job. Dr. Harrington, Natalie Guerrero, and the team, thank you so much. We were here, actually, on this stage, celebrating our LGBTQ plus students. So colleagues, this is important for us. It's a way for us to give voice and identity and celebrate the culture of our students. I think it's important for us to give a platform for our students, to have an opportunity to celebrate who they are as individuals. So I appreciate the board's support in continuing these, especially during these times when identity is at question for many of our students through the rhetoric that we're hearing. And I want to continue to support our students in their journeys educationally, but also ensuring that they understand that we have welcoming environments across all of our nine campuses, and we will continue to support them in every way possible. So can we give a round of applause to all the folks that are involved with the affinity graduations? I know Dr. Regina Smith is here and the whole team that coordinated these, so there she is. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we can go on to the next slide, and I'm going to, in the interest of time, go quickly, but I would be remiss again if I didn't acknowledge Pride Month. And I do want to thank all of the colleges. I know some have raised the pride flag. All of those are doing events throughout the month of June. And of course, I think more importantly, our pride centers across our colleges that continue to provide that space, the safe harbor and safe space for many students who may be struggling in, at the community college level. The counselors that are there, the staff that are there are amazing in providing that support. And I want to make sure I give them a shout out because thanks to this board, we were able to establish pride centers at every one of our colleges. Our presidents have been incredibly supportive of this, but more importantly, again, ensuring that our students have a place where they feel safe, they can get support, counseling, and additional services. So again, Dean Harrington, trustee Vella, thank you for your leadership and the entire board, our presidents, our staff, and our faculty for continuing to support our students. This is what Pride Month is about. It's about the support that we as educators provide to each and every one of our students. So thank you again for that. And then if we can go on to the next slide, a couple more real quick. Again, it's been said, but I, I think it's important again to recognize this, Juneteenth. To me, it's beyond clearly the celebration and the reflection of what Juneteenth means in the history of the United States. I think it's about action, similar to Pride Month and others. What is it that we're doing, not only to reflect, but what actions are we taking to continue to make education more equitable for all students, particularly our Black and African-American students here? There's a lot of work to do, and I want to be the first one, as your chancellor, to acknowledge that we've done a lot, but there's plenty of more work ahead of us to ensure that every single one of our Black and African-American students feel connected to the campuses, feel heard, and make sure that every one of them has the same opportunity as anybody else to be successful. That's the action that we're sort of putting forth going forward, and I know our college presidents are committed, as I am, to make sure that we continue to make these spaces more equitable and fair for all students. And again, in particular, our African-American and Black students. So to me, that's what Juneteenth really means for LACC. So I want to acknowledge that as well. And then lastly, we did have, this is a kind of a carryover, a pull-up concert on May, I believe, twenty-ninth. And the goal of this concert was to just raise mental health awareness, to ensure that students know that we have services and support across our nine colleges. LACC was, you know, certainly part of this, sponsoring this event. I do want to thank trustee Nichelle Henderson under your leadership. I think this started. Thank you so much. And, you know, for, for some cultures, getting rid of that stigma on mental health, that it is okay to seek help, that it is okay for you to, to need additional support, that you're not alone. And I think throughout this event, that was a highlight for all the folks that spoke in support of our students. Right now, in these dire times, I think it's important for students to have people they can talk to as they're going through stressful, dire situations. And I think the focus of this concert was about that, mental health, support. Folks in the county were there as well. So while it was a celebration, more importantly, I think it was a call to action to help our students, an openness around what information we can give. All of our colleges have services that they provide to help with mental health, and we made that a point that evening. So again, I want to thank the trustees for the support of this and trustee Henderson for leading the effort. So thank you so much. With that, I'll conclude my report. Madam President.
Sure. I, I think there is some follow-up for discussion. Trustee Fran?
I just wanted to follow up on...
The resolutions?
No, two more and one more slide back. One more. This one. One of my biggest plans as a student trustee is to focus on a unity in our district. As you do know, we are the most celebrated district of all that come with us, right? And in these classrooms, as being a student, I'm in classrooms mixed with different diversities every single day. But many of our students don't get it why we get separated at the end. And we get your guys' message of why you do it is to reunite us with our identity, where we feel safe and we can feel like family again. But why can't we not do that all in the same circle? I want to know different identities. I want to learn about the Asia-Pacific. I want to learn about the MiHente. I want to learn about whatever culture that I'm not a part of because I'm involved in it, I'm around it, I'm in the classroom with it, and I need to understand of who I'm sitting next to. I'm all about learning and I'm all about unity, but how are we going to practice unity if you keep splitting us up on our biggest days, on our biggest moments, right? Our own celebration between our campuses, that, that's already done. So why separate us when it's time to celebrate? I think when it's time to celebrate, all of us need to be in the same room and celebrate together. We cry together, we laugh together, we get angry together, we pass together, we graduated together. So why, when it comes to celebrations, we have to split that up in between cages? I think we need to be, I want to work on pretty much as a celebration coming into twenty-twenty-six of making sure all of our identity groups are in one big circle, and we're tasting the different cultures of foods, we're listening to the different cultures of musics, we're intervening with the culture that's involved in the city of Los Angeles College District, right? So I want you guys to understand, as I'm moving this position, I will be collecting my receipts and data to give you that I'm not just speaking from a one-person student standpoint, I'm speaking amongst my two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand students. So with that being said, I want to just conclude that there because I don't want to get carried away, but I want to make you guys know that that's one of my main goals that I will be focusing on when I'm talking to my presidents at your colleges, of making sure the unity is being met at its highest standards that it needs to be met at. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any other comments from the chancellor's report, colleagues? So we now have the combined consent calendar. This is item J one through W eleven. These items include consent calendar for human resources, personnel commission, academic affairs, student services, budget and finance, business and facilities. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar for J one through W eleven?
So moved.
So moved by Hernandez?
The second.
Second by Veras. Are there any items which require additional information? Are there any items which require additional information? Nope. Okay, Chancellor Ramon, do we have any trustees disclosures to make on the consent calendar item? No, right?
No.
Lupe, may I have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote. Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vares?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Items X1 through X20, may I have a motion and a second to adopt those items? May I have a motion? Moved by trustee Buelna?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson? Are there any items which require additional information? Chancellor Ramon, there was no disclosures, correct?
No disclosures. Did you?
I...
Sorry, pause.
No, we're not disclosures for this section.
Okay. Roll call, please, Lupe?
I'm sorry. This is the X section, right?
Yes.
Chancellor, just from the standpoint of, I know we had a public comment, and I want for the record, if you could talk about X20? Yes? Second. I flicked my finger and it went off. Yeah, X20. From the sake, for the public standpoint, you know, the fact that we've had failed searches, we've had questions, I wanted to sort of give you the opportunity to talk through this. I understand that we've received emails from our general counsel and an explanation so forth, but sometimes the public doesn't have a chance to understand what we're evaluating on the heels of a couple failed processes. I think it's important to at least get some very clear, what's the word I'm looking for? Description of what's transpired, where do we stand, and your recommendation for us to move forward.
Thank you, trustee Vares. Well, let me answer that. The recommendations there to approve the matter today. In terms of, you're right, this is the third time we've gone out. I had the opportunity to come in on the front end of this particular process, working very closely with contract procurement, vice chancellor of facilities, Dr. Sata, to ensure that the process was followed in accordance with board policies and procedures. We did go out for a bid again. The instructions as to the actual scope of work, the process related to, the bidding was also enclosed at the front end so that folks were aware of what the process looked like. There was, as typical in any process, a committee and an interview process that took place. Prior to that, there were three opportunities for folks who were interested in bidding to get additional information. I believe we held three of those so that folks were aware of what the process would look like. That all took place prior to the application process. It was bidded competitively, and ultimately, we had, as was stated, two qualifying companies. Subsequent to that, there was a letter of intent to award. Folks were notified about that, and they were also notified on the front end about the bidding process and the timeline. I believe everything that was done was done in compliance with our board rule and our policy. I do not believe there was any missteps in the process, which is important as we're bringing the matter forward to you. And clearly, we understand the concern that's been raised. However, we have worked to review that particular information, as well as sat with legal counsel to review whether or not there were any missteps in the process, and we don't believe they are. So at this point in time, we believe that the process has been followed as in accordance with board rules. To change or deviate from the process would require us to change board rules, which is certainly not the recommendation today. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you have. But again, I want to underscore the point here that the process was done in accordance with our board rules and our regulations.
Follow-up? Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I just, just for some questions of clarification. So there was public comment in the beginning of the meeting. Is there, was there a way for teams to access the scoring prior to determine the bidding process?
Yeah, let me, I'm going to ask vice chancellor Sata and/or Ms. Moffett to speak generally about when that information can become available to any particular entity wishing to receive it. Can you, either one of you comment on that?
Do you mean the proposers?
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't typically allow the viewing of the scoring prior to action by the board. They can submit a public records request, and when that is submitted, that is when information related to scoring can occur.
Okay. So I mean, that's like with a formal bid protest proceed, through the formal bid protest procedure?
Correct. And then we also included in the RFP was a section on debriefings. But again, that occurs after the award of the contract for vendors to be allowed to get a debriefing at the sole discretion of the district, to have a debriefing and to view their own scoring. But we would not allow or show the other scores until after the award of the contract, and that will be done through the public records request.
Okay. And then to confirm, so there is a, the process to do that for the bid protest and hence for disclosure of score, that's all in, that was in the RFP?
Yes, it was. It was all in the RFP as an attachment, an addendum to the RFP, the full process as well as incorporated within the body of the RFP, how to protest. And I think the chancellor alluded to it. We had three opportu, actually, four opportunities for proposers to ask questions or seek clarification on the RFP process. We had three pre-proposal conferences. Two were virtual, one, I'm sorry, two were in person at the ESC, one was virtual. And then we also had a Q and A process where vendors can submit questions, and then we would reply and attach it as an addendum, the responses.
And does that mean that, just so I understand, so if someone did submit with, per those procedures, would that then cause board approval? Like, would there then be an opportunity to review necessary documents to be able to put forward a protest? Or how does that work?
Correct. So typically, what happens in the district is if we receive a protest within the protest period, which is within five days of the notice of intent to award, we will confer with district leadership and the chancellor regarding how to proceed. We have three opportunities to proceed. We either can pull back the notice of intent to award, we can review the bid protest, and we can also decide to just review it and send out a letter. And then with that, if it goes to the director of business services first, or the chief facilities executive, whomever is handling the protest afterwards, if we just say that we decide that the protest was not valid, we would, there is an appeals process that happens after that, and it is done by the chancellor through a board, through a committee, and then that committee would then present to the board through that appeals process. So it doesn't just stop at the director of business services if it, if that's, if we decide not to go through it. There's also another process that usually, if we were to receive a protest, oftentimes we will not put it on the agenda or pull it from the agenda while we review the protest.
I'm assuming, just because it makes sense to me, if you're protesting and you don't have full information, you would need some opportunity to review documents. So if that, if that was done within the time period, does that pause it so that then the protesting team will receive all appropriate bid documentation?
Information such as?
Such as scoring.
Until the board approves it, we do not provide the scoring. Scoring is not provided until the action of the board because we're still within the deliberative process of the RFP. So we will not provide any information related to scoring until there is an award of the contract. But, but, but any proposer can protest during that time period, within the five days.
I'm a little confused by that timeline.
I think, maybe I'm correct, I think trustee Hernandez is saying, if there is a bid protest?
Okay.
Does that sort of put the process on pause until that's reviewed?
The board can still approve it. Our policies state that the board can still approve even if there is a protest. Our practice has been that if we were to receive a protest, we would review it, consult with leadership, review the protest procedures, and we can either pull it and pause it to the next agenda, or we can, if it's valid, we'll make an assessment on that process. But it does not always require that we have to pull the item based on our policy.
What was the timeline for the protest?
So for this particular one, the protest, we issued the notice of intent to award on May 30th, and so the five-day protest was up on, I believe it was June the 6th. So Friday, May 30th is when we issued, and then June 6th was the five-business-day period where the protest was up. And I personally stayed to about 5:45, 6 o'clock, to make sure that we did not receive any, and we did not.
Thank you.
Questions?
Please.
So in terms of the protest, how are the parties, are both parties notified at the same time? Or just in terms of the award, let's just say, both parties are notified, and do you call them? Did you send an email? And how are they notified?
Sure. So just, if I can just step back just a little bit, part of the process is that we also did a notice of intent to negotiate, and that was part of the RFP process. And in the notice of intent to negotiate, we informed both proposers of their ranking and also that we were entering into negotiations. So that was done on May 15th. Once we finished negotiations and had a successful negotiation with the vendor shown here, we issued the notice of intent to award, and that's the May 30th date that I just talked about. And then with that date, we have five business days for a vendor to protest. Did that answer your question?
Yes, but I don't think I understood that from the public comment that we had earlier. It didn't sound like there were five days. They weren't, that they were not aware that there were the?
Oh, there were five, there were five business days.
Okay.
For sure. We, and again, because this was the third time around, and even the other times, we made sure it was a very clean process. We met weekly, we made sure that everything was done in accordance with the requests for proposals. So like I said, I even stayed late just to make sure someone didn't slide anything under the door on that line.
I have more questions, but go ahead. Oh, that's separate, okay. So ED code dictates that when we hire an executive-level person such as a chancellor, a vice chancellor, that we have to read into the record, like the specifics, including salary and car allowance and all of that. Just bear with me, I'm getting to something here. I was a little taken aback, to be honest, that this was just kind of lumped into the consent calendar, because this, when I read it, this is a nearly $100 million contract, correct?
Correct. It is, the total would be about 88.
Eighty-eight, ninety-seven, plus about $4 million in other expenses. I thought we would come here today and get some kind of a presentation about the process, the selection, the why. We don't do this very often. I think when I first got on the board, we had, we already had a firm, and then when the contract was awarded to Jacobs the last time, I believe we had some kind of a public presentation. And so was that not part of today's agenda? I mean, I'm just a little taken aback that it's, that there's nothing, that we're not getting a presentation about why Jacobs was selected and the work they're going to do and the cost of the, like, we're getting very little information, I guess, is my point.
So we, you know, in the past, since I've been here, we've been bringing the PMO contract to the board in this manner. I know that we got very clear direction at the, when we talked about the PMO contract coming to board, that we wanted to do it in the three months and make sure that we, make sure that it's clean and clear process. And so that's what we tried to do with that, and we did not prepare a presentation, I think, simply because this is how we had brought the item to the board previously. But I don't know, I know that there had been updates that were provided, I believe, through FIPAC, but we did not come with a presentation today for it. I don't know if you want to add something?
Trustees, if I can just add a couple of clarifying points. One is that in the terms of the overall contracts that we typically bring to the board, this is a large contract for sure in terms of professional services, but not the largest contract that you've ever contemplated. Our construction contracts tend to be this size or larger. So in terms of a process, we're following our standard process for approvals, and that's kind of why it's just presented the way it is. And then secondly, I did, I just wanted to kind of underline the point that were there to have been a bid protest, it would have triggered certain actions where we would have been able to share information. But just to emphasize, we never received a bid protest in that period. There was a notification of intent to award or to negotiate that was sent. It explicitly stated that the order of the finish, and it explicitly stated that there would be a two-week period of negotiation with a finite end date, and then we'd go to the next steps, which would, which would trigger after the notice of intent to award was issued, the five-day protest period. And so we did not receive anything within that five-day protest period.
And the intent to award goes to both parties, so the other party knows? Okay.
That's correct. That is our standard procedure.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, you asked a question that I forgot to answer. You asked, how did it go out? And they went out via email. Via email to the proposer.
And if I may, there's one other question that we received from a board member, just to clarify around the payment of taxes, and we did want to clarify here for the board that the proposer that's being recommended here for the award is in good standing with the franchise tax board and the California Secretary of State. And so we, again, believe that the recommendation would stand for your consideration this evening.
Thank you for that, Dr. Sata. I think one of the questions regarding the tax issue is when we are accepting bids, what is the importance of the company's, I guess, state of origin or primary, where they primarily do their business? They can still have business locations in California, but is there any type of a requirement for where they should be based? And how does that, does it have an impact on bids? Because I understand in the past, there was a concern regarding the, I guess, state status of a previous vendor. And is that no longer a consideration, or is that, that's the concern?
One of the requirements for the RFP is that the vendor is licensed to do work in the state of California. So we do check that, we do require that that information is presented, and we do check it in the business. So in the awardee, the potential awardee pending approval is licensed to do business in the state of California.
I have a follow-up question to the, to the bid protest.
I have a follow-up question to the, to the bid protest. Is there any specific details to what the requirements to protest? Or can you just submit any questions or concerns related to the PMO?
We attached the bid protest procedures, the full procedures. It's, just for your information, it's procurement policy PP 0409 to the request for proposal. And that is the full process that shows how a vendor should submit a bid. It also entails the process that if it's not accepted, what the appeals process would be. So it is, the full policy is attached, and it was part of the RFP.
And it, and it's, I mean, as far as the protest, you could petition any issue?
It does not specify.
So just like open-ended?
Right, exactly. It's open-ended.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess to follow up, but this would be a question probably for our general counsel. So the districts, the, the policies that are on this document, on the RFP document and the district's policies around protests, are these aligned with what's considered to be standard and customary in terms of procurement procedures and bid protest procedures?
Thank you, Trustee Hernandez or Vice President Hernandez. Yes, they do, and in fact, they're even a little bit more liberal relative to the time. And just to add a little bit of specificity, all that our policies do, and that is general good practice, is that when you submit your bid protest, that you provide evidence supporting it. So we don't dictate what it is, and it's a very broad, you know, it's a very broad allowance for somebody to raise an issue, and then we respond in kind. So it is, in fact, consistent with good practices, state law, and in fact, actually allows some additional days compared, compared to some of our colleagues throughout the state, five days as opposed to three. So, I mean, we're very comfortable with our process, and it's actually relatively easy to follow. And the only thing that we would add is supporting evidence relative to the issue that you're raising.
Board colleagues, are there any other questions on the item?
Just, Alfred, just one, one comment. Look, I, I raised this because we've, this is our third bid. And it's, it's important for me to see integrity in the process. I, I think, you know, obviously, both of the companies in this competition have worked with the district for years. They're both reputable, do excellent work. And I haven't had a chance to see scoring or those kinds of things. We're at the board level, we take the recommendation of the staff in the process, and we ask questions about the process. We take that very seriously. And I imagine both of the competitors here had plenty of outstanding features to their proposals. If not, they wouldn't come to the table if they didn't think they could do, continue to do and, and, and try to do things better. Inherent in that is also, generally speaking, doing things better, too. You know, we've, we ramped our appeal process some years back because I think there was some blatant abuse within the district for years. I, I don't know if the process we have here, there were some parts I understood clearly, some parts, I, I was listening very intently to see that it followed our rules, and, and that was important to me. It could be that, you know, every so often, you have to evaluate appeals processes and, and see if there's a best standard. But, you know, we did make a reaction some seven years ago based on blatant abuse in, in the process here that was, that was occurring. And I know that because I voted on, on recommending a change to come forward. But, but I think in terms of this, these steps forward, you know, I guess one of the things on the table is, is at, at any point, could a public records request have been made? That includes the scoring, because I'm, I'm a little confused, because I was, I was hearing that that could not happen until the intent to award, because that was part of the close part. I just want to be clear on the process side of it.
No, and I think that's a, again, if I can, so there are two actually parts to the particular question, and I think this goes to some of the questions that were asked. If one of the proposers submitted a bid protest and it was related to scoring, they would get the scores. A member of the public would not get those because those are considered deliberative until a decision is made. So that is the distinction. So actually, in terms of your decision will determine what it is that we'll provide. Prior to you taking an actual decision, that would be deliberative. That's one of the reasons why we generally don't do detailed presentations, because a competitive bidding, it's a deliberative process. So a party can submit a bid protest, they would get the information. A member of the public, or even that party submitting a PRA, would not get that information until after you get the decision, because this is still considered a deliberative process.
Okay, got that, that clears it for me, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I call the question?
I just wanted to add, thank you, that clarification helped me. And I do want to say, I know that this has been a long process and a lot of time, both by the bidders and our staff, and a lot of time, I know it was stopped three times or something, and really want to appreciate everyone and your hard work, and I appreciate the public comment today as well. Yeah, so thank you for that explanation. But I will say that when we're approving hundred million dollar contracts, we should probably read something into the record so that the public knows the business that we're doing, because this is a big contract, and I don't take that lightly. Thank you.
So just to remind folks, I do have a motion and a second to adopt items X1 through X20. We've, we've discussed, are we good to vote? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis, advise you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
So was that item approved on that?
Yes.
Okay.
No one called it, yeah.
I did want to speak to all of this. You know, I was FIPAC chair for two consecutive years, going through this process. I really, really want to thank the two applicants and other applicants for their, first of all, their interest in the district. It's not a small feat for the industry to be able to do that, to trust us to apply. I do think we do need some reform, a bit more of guardrails to ensure that the applicants feel that this is a clean process, that anyone has the opportunity to, to be able to win. I think that there should be debriefs, in particular after the board makes their decision, that would include some of the scoring, some of the details on the decision of the committee, letting people know who was part of the committee, who scored it. And I really think after the third time, we really need to think about reimbursing these companies for the, the, the time, the money. There are agencies that do that, that cover some of the costs for them to put together these applications, in particular firms that, you know, show that, that have the need that, you know, perhaps due to the fact that, you know, we went out three times. I don't really, you know, maybe the first time, you, you gotta do it, you pay for it. But if we're going three times, let's really look into that, because that's not fair. You know, we, I think at the second time, we should have had some type of coverage for them to be able to apply. And, you know, I, I think that moving forward, we have to be very cognizant about how, you know, the district performs this procurement, and, you know, definitely ensure that we have the capability of making people feel, regardless of the outcome, that they're always welcome here, that they have a future at LACC D, and that we are a big bond, you know, or multiple bond, so that there is always going to be that partnership with all the firms that apply. So with that being said, you know, want to ensure that I thanked all the applicants who, again, are community leaders, who understand the industry and took their chance on us and trust, and I hope they feel that their time and partnership with us will still be there. So thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Okay, so moving along to facilities items Y. We are separating Y8 from Y1 through Y7. So may I have a motion and a second to adopt facilities items Y1 through Y7?
Don't move.
Don't move by Trustee Vela. Second by Trustee Hernandez. Any questions that require additional information? Yes, please.
For the, the, the building, or are we?
Y3?
Okay, so thank you. I think the question is on Y3. This is a question around whether we're leasing the building or buying the building. This is a builder's risk claim, East LA College, southeast. This is a building that we are actually, it's part of LACC D, so we're building on our own property. And it will be an extension of East LA College. Yes.
Any other questions? Y1 through Y7? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis, advise you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great, so now for item Y8, resolution on the LACC D County of LA, state of California, authorizing a sale of surplus real, real estate property located at 9700 South Sepulveda Boulevard to the city of LA, California Municipal Corporation Airport, acting by order of and through the Board of Airport Commissioners and Public Agency. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
I'll second. So moved by Hernandez, second by Trustee Veras. Any questions or comments? This one does need all seven of us to, to vote in a affirm. Roll call please, Lupe? Oh, yes.
Is there a reason why it wasn't a whole separate agenda where it says like unanimous vote required?
No, I think we were talking about that, but it didn't get separated, so we've since separated it.
Can we just, it's okay, can we just make a note in our meeting, our minute, that, you know, we took it out and then voted separately and that it needed unanimous?
Sure.
And it should have been separated in the agenda.
Yeah, it, it was, yes, it was definitely brought up, and so that's why we made the adjustment. Sorry about that, board colleagues. So this one does need unanimous vote of approval. Lupe, roll call please.
Student trustee Francis, advise you vote? Trustee Buelna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, board colleagues. Our next item is item Z, human resources. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), which is part of the Brown Act, we are required to make an oral summary of proposed actions on salaries, salary schedule, or compensation paid in form of fringe benefits for all executive level positions as defined by subdivision D of Government Code Section 3511.1 during the open meeting in which final action is to be taken. In our case, we need to provide such summary of four positions such as chancellor, vice chancellor, and college presidents. The item now before us is to approve the contract employee for Dr. Monte E. Perez as interim college president of ELAC College from July 1st to December 31st, 2025. Dr. Perez's salary will be step five, $26,895.95 per month of the vice chancellor and college president's salary schedule, and will be entitled to the same health and welfare benefits as are received by our unrepresented, unrepresented administrators, including retiree health benefits. Dr. Perez will also receive 500 per month in car allowance and is eligible to receive the same salary increase, career increment, and doctoral differential as other unrepresented administrators. May I have a motion and a second on item Z1? Yes, please, Dr. Buelna?
And, and I didn't hear this, maybe you said it. At what level is he coming in?
He is coming in at step five.
Okay, that's the highest, right? I just wanted to make sure.
The highest.
Okay, all right.
Well deserved. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move by Trustee Hoffman.
We're not going to let you retire ever.
Second by Trustee Hernandez. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Hopefully, your wife isn't going to hate all of us, but here you are, you're never retiring. Thanks.
Any other comments? I mean, she did, at the mi gente, she did attend and said you were very extremely happy with us, so I hope that's a win-win. Any other comments? Roll call please, Lupe.
Student trustee Francis, advise you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buelna?
Absolutely.
Trustee Henderson?
Most definitely.
And Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
No, yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
I'll give him a yes.
Yes. Trustee, Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, congratulations, we appreciate you. Next item is AA recommendations from the chancellor, AA1 through AA5. Chancellor Ramon, please provide a brief explanation on the next five action items.
Thank you, Board President Ino. Four of these are second reading, you saw these last month. The first one is a required action. This is AA1, the resolution for the Board of Supervisors to establish tax rates for or measure CC and measure LA bonds of LACC D. And these are expected to be sold during the fiscal year 2526. So this action is necessary to be able to move forward with that. The other four are primarily technical changes that we're making. Again, these came before you last month. You'll see there Board Policy 3410. Again, we're updating the terminology there. The Board Policy 5010, admissions and concurrent enrollment, again, coming before you for a second read. And then off-campus organizations, that's a very small and one-change technical in nature. And again, the naming of the buildings facility, as we're reviewing all of these board policies, we're making sure that the terminology is up to date. So nothing of substance, primarily technical. You saw these last month, and I would encourage you to approve all of them today. Thank you.
Great. So we do have to go through them individually? Well.
You can take them all.
Okay. If there's no objections, I will do a, a, a motion and a second for items A.
I might, and General Counsel, if you can stop me in my tracks if I'm doing something not too good here, but, you know, I know that the bonds, in particular, are traded and bought in Wall Street and so on and so forth. So if possible, I would like for Ms. Gordon and staff to really have at least a pulse on, you know, where we're selling these bonds and if there is major influence by anti, you know, LGBT hate groups that potentially, any private capital firms that could be fueling or funding. I think, I think it's appropriate, as the federal government wants to remove our funding regarding DIA, I think we should at least have a conversation with the people who sell our bonds to ensure that we are not participating and giving our, our taxpayer money to firms that benefit, that are involved in funding and anti-LGBT, anti-black, anti-immigrant, you know, corporations, and that also fund such hate groups like the Family Council and stuff like that. So if we can have that type of conversation, General Counsel and Chancellor, I would really appreciate it. I know it's, seems like a crazy task because everyone's involved in everything up in Wall Street, but at the very least, if we can have that conversation, thank you.
Thank you. Can I say something? Thank you, Trustee Vela, but I think this is just to establish the tax rate on the bonds. Any bonds that we sell have to cut, it usually comes through to the Budget Committee first. I don't think we're selling bonds with this action.
No, we're not.
But 100%, I agree with you, because those will be all the questions that we'll ask when. um, Ms. Gordon comes to us in terms of selling bonds. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. But this just really establishes um, the tax rate on these bonds, my understanding.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Good point. Great point. Thank you. Any, well, first, can I get a motion and a second um to approve item AA one through AA five?
Don't move.
The move by trustee Bella, second by hu- trustee Hunter Hernandez. Um, any other further discussion? Lupe, can I have a, a roll call please?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yeah.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so now we'll move on to items BB, matters required a super majority vote. May, um, the use of Los Angeles College peer, uh, Pierce College funds from contingency reserve. May I have a motion and a second on item BB one?
Don't move.
The move by trustee Bueno?
Second.
Second by trustee Bella. Any discussion?
I have discussion. I think we had a discussion about this at our budget committee meeting. I don't know if it was the last one or the one before, I didn't report out on it this last time, so maybe it was two months ago. Uh, I, I did talk to President Aguilar about this as well. You know, we don't like to make it a practice of using funds that are in, in reserve. Um, but she assured me this is a one-time deal and that it will help close our budget deficit and it's not that much money, so I would recommend approving.
Thank you. Any further discussion items? Roll call please Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote?
Yeah.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item CC, notice reports and informa- informatives. Board members, there is one notice and one informative, no action is required at this time. So item DD, announcements and indications of future proposed action by members of the board. Would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposal actions?
I don't have any announcements, but I want to ask about out-of-state travel. Are all states are, we can go to every state? Okay. Do we anticipate any with this administration and what's happening, any new travel bans coming up? Okay, but can we keep an eye on that? Great. And we feel like it's safe for our students to travel? Yes?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure. Um, we have plans in place if something were, you know, with the ICE raids, if something were to happen to one of our students in another state, are we prepared to?
The safety.
We, we should probably start thinking about those things.
Okay.
I'm looking straight at you, general counsel. Thank you. Just we need to be proactive. Thanks.
Trustee Bella?
Yeah, we um, are having our um workforce development ad hoc committee on June twenty seventh at two via Zoom. There was an email that went out announcing it with the Zoom link, and if trustees uh want to attend, let me know. Thank you.
Great. Uh, board colleagues? Um, I also have a PETA plus meeting with the ch- advisory committee to the chancellor on um, June twenty sixth, uh, I think at ten thirty in light of the recent Monobello um, hate crime by one of our faculty members. In addition to all of the ICE raids and um vulnerable ca- campus community, I wanted to hold space for discussion. Um, so if people feel that they have a place to kind of talk about these issues and figure out a plan um, to protect each other. So please, it's via Zoom. If you'd like to attend, all folks are welcome.
Um, uh, president Ino?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if you have discussed it with our local advocate, um.
Yes, yeah, so um, representatives from the city of Monobello, um, the chancellor has organized for them to participate as well. Um, so we can, yeah, increase awareness and zero tolerance for hate crimes and, you know, just protect our, our vulnerable populations right now. I think it's paramount to be very vocal and unapologetic. Um, great. Any other future proposed actions? Okay, so now we have item EE. The um request addressed the board trustee on matters not on the agenda. The First Amendment and Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or pu- public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on the issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on the private unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made which by, which may subject a speaker to personal liability. Um, are there any members of the public signed to address the board on matters not on the agenda item? Yes, um, so there are nine folks um wanting to talk about the LACC D journalism program. Um, we are limited to twenty minutes per item, so I would like to motion um, in, in order to allow all of the, the folks to be able to speak, um, a two-minute um, limit, that way they can all have an opportunity to speak. Um, can I get a, well, that'll be my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson. Um, roll, roll call please Lupe?
Student trustee Francis advisory vote? To- trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Bella?
Yeah.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Great. Um, the first person, I have Serena Sax and then Angela Johnson and then David Martin. So we'll start with those folks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Serena Sax, yes.
Yes.
Wait, can you hear me? Two minutes, thank you.
Can I please have like two minutes and ten seconds? Um, I wrote everything down, I'm gonna read as fast as I can, but I will probably go to two minutes and five seconds. Uh, so I am an LACC alumna and double Columbia University graduate, most recently with an MA in journalism. I have been auditing journalism classes since twenty twenty. I came back to help because all my journalism classes from City counted for my MA. Moreover, I received a fourteen thousand dollar National Magazine Scholarship from Columbia for my work at the Collegiate Times. So LACC is a national recognized institution in part because of the student journalist's work. Columbia knows it, but apparently those at LACC who should know it and value it ignore it. And they canceled the magazine class based on misleading information. One, Chair Kana wrote in an email that the cancellation of the magazine comes as a directive from the district according to Dean V Lee. We want to know where that this directive is from. Two, LACC cites low enrollment. But the data from the California Community College Chancellor's Office shows that journalism numbers at City have been uh, up in the last two years. Three, LACC cites too many audits. If they don't want students to audit, they should offer other classes. We have three that are already written and approved, but never offered. Four, President Gabriel cites financial burdens. The printing of the magazine was twelve thousand dollars and not thirty thousand like he wrote in an email to Chancellor Roman. And those funds, as we all know, come from lottery money. So I don't understand where the financial burden is. Five, Chair Kana said in the epic meeting last month that the program, the journalism program is a zombie program and that the newspaper is a pet project for returning students. For the record, this is a-
Sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Angela Johnson?
Faster than Serena. Um, I just want to say that um, the words that you say need to match your actions. So for um President Gabriel, his words do not match his actions. I met with him um, in April. He told me I care about the journalism program. I support the journalism students. Yet, there was a unanimous, unanimous decision by the uh Vitality um Committee, um, that's probably vi- wrong word. Anyway, there's a committee studying, studying the vitality of the viability, excuse me, of the journalism program. There was a unanimous decision to move the program from VAMA to Communications. Okay, so if President Gabriel supports the program, he wants the program to thrive, he would not um, um, unilaterally uh go against a committee of learned professionals in journalism who unanimously decided they want the program. It would be better for the program to be switched to Communications instead of under a visual and media arts department where it is suffering a slow death. He doesn't care about the journalism students, even though he says he does, because these actions show that he doesn't care about the journalism program. We speak truth to power and I don't believe that he likes that. He wants us to show about, uh, write about positive things that are happening at LACC. Well, because he did not approve our budget for the first part of the semester. We were not able to print the six issues that we usually print. We did not get to print until the middle of the semester, so we printed four issues instead of six. You can hear the interview that I did with him where he professes to care about the program, where his actions show that he did it. It's on um, uh, Zoom, you can see the issue, it's in the hallway. It was in issue three where we, I gave him an opportunity to talk about how he really cares about the program where he said he did, but his actions show that he does not. Um, just relating to the amount of thirty thousand dollars that he said it cost the magazine to print, well, he didn't pay thirty thousand dollars for the magazine this semester because they canceled it. Uh, instead of going once a year, now it's once every two years. So what happened to the thirty thousand dollars? That was supposed to finance the magazine?
I'm sorry, your time's up.
For this semester. I want to know where the money is. Did he spend it on his summer excursion? Cause he sure didn't spend it on the magazine. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, David Martin, and then after David is Amy Shank, and then Rhonda Guest.
Mere readers. That's what Dean V Lee calls those who read the Collegian. Do mere readers write the articles you find written in the Collegian? Do mere readers collect thousands of Kindle books? I think not. And I think this needs to be adjusted. If you would stop and pay attention to what is being said and written in the newspaper, then you would know what I'm talking about. However, you're too busy trying to destroy journalism rather than take the time to see what is being written and said. No other class comes under attack like journalism. And the reason is, I believe, is because the Collegian is not afraid to air out the school's dirty laundry in front of people. If the school's administration would stop making stupid mistakes, then there wouldn't be any dirty laundry to air out in front of the public. It's ironic that the school's marketing and or public relations slogan is "You matter here." I guess when it comes to journalism, that is not the case. The only thing that matters to you people and the school administration is your big fat check. Not the students.
Uh, next is Amy Shank, then Rhonda Guest, and then Vanessa Cold. If you could please state your name.
I don't think Amy Shank is here, but I'll take her two minutes. My name is Rhonda Guest and I teach journalism at LA City College, and today I have an ask for you. I want to be treated like the journalism advisors at the other journalism programs in the LACC D. I am not. I notified you on May twelfth that administration published the fall schedule without hybrid classes. Hybrid allows students to be in the classroom or online. It builds enrollment and helps students control their finances. Some hybrid has been restored without dialogue, no communication from the dean. This is how it works, thrust, parry, retreat. Here is the harm. As I explained when I wrote to you late last year, when Journalism one eighty-five and two eighty-five were cut last semester, students paid the price. Some could not qualify for the Golden Globe scholarships. They needed one eighty-five and two eighty-five to have the requisite five units to even apply. Those classes, one eighty-five, two eighty-five, generate FTEs, but I'm not paid for them. So why were they cut? And then inexplicably returned to the fall semester um schedule. Please reinstate the TBA hours, that's to be assigned hours at City College. Students have studied this way for more than forty years in our district. I have students who will not come to campus now because of their immigration status. I explained this in writing to my dean. Crickets. Two weeks ago, plainclothes agents stopped students on the metro adjacent to the college, Santa Monica in Vermont. They asked them about their sexual orientation and they asked for real ID. We need the TBA hours, it protects our students. The dean at Pierce has not eliminated the TBA hours for journalism, how about that? The dean at ELAC has not, nor has the dean at Valley. That makes City College an outlier. Journalism students study and work at their craft on weekends and at night. I know because I work with them. Administrators at this college are targeting journalists with the-
Your time's up. Sorry, thank you.
I don't get Amy's time, I guess.
Um, Vanessa Cold, and then Andy Richards, and then Emily Gonzalez.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Cold. I'm a current student here at LACC. Um, this has been, the spring has been my first semester here. I'm in the, you can't hear me. Uh, I'm in the journalism program here, this is my first semester. I've loved it so far. My writing has been drastically improved. I also working as an editor for the opinion section of the Collegiate Newspaper have discovered that I really love helping other people to improve their writing. It's been a great experience. And I know I'm not the only one because Collegian writers have won tons of national awards. Uh, I want to highlight one, which is a Gold Circle Award, which the Columbia Galactic Press Association gives out. Uh, one of the feature stories that three of our student reporters wrote, won first place for one of these Gold Circle Awards. The second place was students from MIT. So Rhonda Guest is over here training our students to be good enough to compete with and beat students from MIT. I don't know why anyone would want to restrict access to that kind of education by cutting any of our classes or opportunities. Um, our students don't just win awards, they also transfer. We have a number of students who have transferred to Columbia now, to Syracuse, to a lot of the Cal State locations. I came to a budget meeting in this room about a month ago where I heard that transfers were down twelve percent, I think, and it was a priority to get those numbers back up. Uh, cutting opportunities for students to do good work, to make a portfolio, is not going to help to increase those transfers. So I think um, doing the magazine every other year is a big problem because if you think about somebody who is trying to submit portfolio work, by the time that a college transfer application is due, you're not going to have the things that would be published in a magazine at the end of the spring semester, which is when it always is. So we're basically reducing the number of students who get to have magazine work in their portfolio by fifty percent. That is not going to help you to increase transfers to good schools at all. Finally, uh, I think it's really important that the uh move of the journalism program from the visual and media arts department to the communications department gets approved. There are no other schools that have journalism in the arts department. That's not a thing anywhere that I could find. Um, and it was unanimously approved. VAMA supports it, the communications department supports it, the academic depart- the academic senate supported it. So I don't know what rational reason there would be for our president to veto that decision. As far as I know, he doesn't have any background in journalism or special knowledge of the field, so I would love to know what his rational, student-centered reason for denying that changes, but I think if we can find a way to move journalism under the communications umbrella, and apparently it has to be done over the summer before fall starts, um, that will actually be really good for student outcomes to be in a department that supports student opportunities rather than wanting to cut them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Andy Richards, Emily Gonzalez, and Sterling Frank. Are any of, are you? Sterling Frank?
Emily Gonzalez, I'm Sterling Franklin. Good afternoon.
Uh, I'm sorry, sir?
My name is Sterling Franklin.
Sterling Franklin, sorry.
I'm in the right place at the right time?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you to Lupe for getting me on the agenda today. Oh, yes, I've been complaining that we can't hear people in the back, but I'll try to swallow the microphone here today. I understand I have three minutes, I'll be quick. I'm Sterling Franklin, age seventy-eight, a retired high school teacher and lawyer. From nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-two, I was a fundraiser at the USC Law School. So I know a good deal about fundraising and I'm trying to help Los Angeles City College raise money. Since nineteen ninety-three, I've been a trustee of the Morris H. Smith Foundation, multi-million dollar foundation, and in- And in 2017, I stopped giving money to Stanford and USC, my alma maters, and started giving money to Los Angeles City College Foundation. Subsequently, I've created six endowment funds, and I'm working on establishing three more. My total gifts are slightly over $600,000 now, and my gifts have resulted in matching gifts of a little bit over $200,000. So my getting and giving is over $800,000. I hope to live long enough to reach a total of gifts to LACC Foundation of $1 million. It is not often you encounter excellence in community colleges. They're just helping high school graduates get their AA degrees and go out in the world of work or transfer to four-year colleges and universities. When you find excellence at community colleges, you must prize it. You must nurture it, help it to succeed. Get it more money, get it more students, get it more teachers. And that's what I'm about. By accident, I discovered the LA City College Journalism Program earlier this year, and I met Professor Rhonda Guest, and I was very impressed. Subsequently, I've given $11,000 for Rhonda to buy anything on her gift, on her wish list that she wanted. $2,300 to provide scholarships for students. To my surprise, when I said, you know, "How can I help you?", she said, "Well, if you give me $2,300, I'll match it personally." Boy, that's really dedication from faculty members when they'll put their own money in the game. Well, good. I'm in process of establishing the $50,000 Professor Rhonda Guest endowed scholarship fund at LACC to benefit Journalism students so we can increase Journalism student enrollment. I expect to be able to, I expect to be able to raise from Rhonda's friends, professional colleagues, and sources that she knows about but hadn't told me about yet. And I'm matching $50,000, and then we'll be cooking. I also will fund a lunch this coming semester in the fall and again in the spring.
Thank you, sir.
To invite local high school Journalism teachers and their students to come to LACC and learn about the Journalism Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. I encourage you to support the Journalism Program. Thank you.
We have Amy Shank still, Andy Richards, and Emily Gonzalez. Do we, are they online, Crystal?
No, they're not.
Okay. So then we have Dejuan Birdsong? Dejuan Birdsong? Online, Crystal?
Yeah, they're online, but they're not responding to the panelist's link or to unmute their mic. There they go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. My name is Dejuan Birdsong. I was a custodian at West LA College. I'm formally requesting reasonable accommodation for my work restrictions due to an on-the-job injury. I was called into an unannounced meeting without union representation and told I would not be accommodated. No interactive process took place which violates ADA requirements. My unfair treatment began when I became a union steward. I believe this contributed to the injury I sustained as day-to-day I was regularly assigned work that others on my crew were not doing. This ongoing pressure created unsafe working conditions and contributed directly to my injury. There are employees working under my same classification who are currently on light duty after undergoing surgery, yet they have been allowed to continue working. I have not allowed any physician to perform surgery on me, and I'm not, and I'm still fully capable of doing my job. I am an able-bodied worker and willing to perform any task within my restrictions. I am willing to be properly evaluated to confirm that I am able to perform my job duties. This inconsistent treatment raises serious concerns of unequal treatment, possibility and retaliation to my union advocacy. The handling of this matter has put me and my family in a state of disarray, both emotionally and financially. As I, as I try to navigate this uncertain situation, I respectfully request a formal meeting to review my case. I expect fair and consistent treatment under the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone's here?
We miss Beatrice Akala?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, 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 column, virtual?
She is-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, please. Regarding the City College Journalism Program?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm here to seek for-
Well, can you pull the mic down so that people virtually can hear you? Thank you.
Good morning. I'm in good afternoon. I'm here to seek for answers since when competing and winning over four-year institutions at the national level is shameful. Yes, it happens here at LACC. The Administration and Department, the Obama Department, keep attacking and slowly dismantling this award-winning discipline. In 2022, the Collegian was recognized by ACP, the Associated College Press, as one of the 100 best newspapers in the country among colleges and other universities. This accomplished that we should be proud of and not be shameful. Also, in 2022, and this year, the Collegian received the Gold Crown, the highest award given by Columbia Scholastic Press Association. This year, only the University of Oregon Journalism and Communications and the University of Miami and the Collegian received this. We also received 12 national awards, and I received eight of these 12 here. But the President Gebrew canceled our award-winning publication by claiming with a reporter of the Collegian that the magazine would cost more than $30,000, which is a lie because I'm the art director, and I was instructed directly by Professor Guest to tell, to remind the printer that our budget was $12,000. And I'd like to ask you, will you please consider to ask us to move or request to help us to move to Communications and leave this toxic environment? And I ask also President Gebrew to stop lying and protecting Obama. And also, one thing that I always think of when I come to campus, it says, "That you matter here." I would like to add one more thing, that in September 2021, LACC Acting Sports Director Robert McKinley violated my Title IX and my First Amendment rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other? Oh, I went through the list. We're good.
We're done with this category.
Yeah, just one more. Amy Shrek, Andy Richards, Emily Gonzalez.
They're not here.
Okay, great. So now we'll move on to item EE2. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board on closed session agenda matters? We have two, Robert Davis and Crystal's on?
I'm just real fit. I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah, we pulled, so we're okay. Okay, so no need.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Great. Okay. So now, item FF, recessed to closed session. The board will now recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph and Brown Act, Government Code Section 54950. At the Education Code, discuss matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant of Government Code Section 54954.5. If there are no objections, hearing none, the meeting will now recess to closed session. Thank you.